I thank everybody for coming this morning if you'd join us for a short prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings you've bestowed upon us. Dear Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning to lead the county. Please pray, dear Lord, that the decisions we make here today will be the best for the most people in the county and the decisions we make would be pleasing unto you. We ask, dear Lord, that you lay your hand upon our law enforcement officers and help keep them safe. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen. Declare this meeting over if you'll join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got a really nice crowd here this morning. We do have kind of a lengthy agenda, but we'll move through it as quick as we can. The minutes of our last meeting have been circulated among the commissioners. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
That was both men, correct? Yes. For that and allow there'll be a second motion for the executive session. Minutes of our executive session, we held on July the 30th, have been circulated. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor? We also have a claims docket that's been circulated. Entertained a motion to approve the claims.
I'll also make that motion.
Second. All in favor? We also have a payroll docket that's been circulated. I entertain a motion to approve the payroll.
And I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor? We're back on schedule now to where our payroll will be in the commissioners' meeting. First thing on our agenda then is the reciprocal resolution 2025-09, and this is for the Worthington Police Vehicle. Marvin, do you have anything you want to explain, say?
Just very quickly. State statute allows governmental entities to negotiate between themselves and agree on the transfer of assets between those entities provided that each body adopts a resolution containing substantially the same language. And so Sheriff had an excess vehicle, Worthington, can use the excess vehicle even though it's got a few miles on it. And the proposal is that the vehicle go to Worthington with lights, light bar, and radio in exchange for the sum of $4,000. That is within the scope of the statute that allows you to negotiate as to what, if any, exchange should take place or it should just be turned over to the governmental entity. So if you approve this, Worthington will approve a substantially similar resolution on, at their meeting on the 12th, and will be able to convey the vehicle and collect $4,000.
Questions, comments? I entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2025-09.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Second. All in favor? VSO, Richard, will you want to tell us anything about your contract?
Well, we have had it, so that's, that's the main thing. It's just a renewal of the licenses for the program that we use to file claims for reference. So there's no question about us needing it. Last year, we bumped it up to three licenses. Indiana VA pays for one of them. We pay for the other two out of our budget. It's budgeted. This year, for whatever reason, they wanted us to sign an MOU, which I can't sign, so that's why it's bumped up to U. And we have a little bit of an issue with the wording in what they want on both sides. So I'll defer to Marvin on what needs to happen next with that. We absolutely have to have them, so.
I agree with Richard. This is what they've been using for a number of years. It's just that the ownership of the company has changed. So it is a assignment of the prior contract plus an extension of the contract to provide the software services. The problem we're running into is that I've asked the sales representative to indicate whether or not this is a take it or leave it contract or if the language of agreement is negotiable because there are some things in there that should be in there from a county government standpoint if it is negotiable. I've been unable to get a response from her on that specific question. I think my recommendation is that if you want to go ahead and approve the agreement, subject to final approval of the county attorney and authorize the president to sign the agreement when that approval is available, then that would be an appropriate action to take this morning so that we can get this moving as soon as we do get a clear answer on that question. Unless you want to just assume that it's take it or leave it and approve it today. That's also an option.
I know it's, I know it's something that we need to do, so I'll make a motion as originally stated to Marvin that we go ahead and approve it upon his approval and then you can sign it. President to sign it after it's approved.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Hi, Ed.
Hi.
Next on our agenda is the community corrections restroom repair. If you, if you want, yeah, but give me just a second. We're still doing some negotiating on this restroom repair and I would like to table that until our next meeting, till we can get the, all the paperwork and.
Is, is, is this the restroom repair for the, for the showers or is it the emergency work done last week on the leak, Marvin?
The only item on the agenda is the restroom repairs, though.
Yeah, this'll be the new repair, so I would, I would like to table that until our next meetings to, so we can get the wording correct and the, on the estimate for the paperwork.
Yeah, we should go have contractor age sign on the next meeting.
So I would entertain that motion to, to table the restroom repair?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor? Lynn, if you want to go ahead and come up here, this'll just save us for, till we get down to the department head comments. We had talked about the replacing the carpet in your.
Control room.
Control room with vinyl tile for, I'll just say, health concerns.
Sure.
You'd sent us some estimates with the vinyl tile, which I think that's the way we would like to go. Marvin, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at those estimates or not.
Reviewed them, raised some questions, and Lynn and I were exchanging emails last evening concerning possibly a different product and looking into a different product than was quoted by either of the parties. One of those parties had made that product available for a county job previously, and it's something that she liked.
I would, myself, I would like for you just to go ahead and get what you want as far as the vinyl tile.
Okay.
I don't have any problem with either one of the options you sent us.
Just let us know which one it is.
Just let us know which, and I, I think you just go ahead and pick which one you want. There was a huge difference between the warranties. I did like the 20-year warranty a lot better than the 10-year warranty, so if, if you want to go that route, I, I don't, I don't think we're going to have any problem with that.
Okay. So just an update on a conversation with Marvin. I did call this morning and they were busy and I was going to check on that other product. If it is, if it comes out to be in the same ballpark as the other and I go and I choose that, that is okay with you all as well?
I don't think that's going to be any problem at all. I mean, the carpet's going to have to be replaced anyhow.
Yes, the carpet probably needs to go.
So I just think we just need to go ahead and, versus wait till our next meeting, you can probably go ahead and have it, get it installed before our next meeting and that, like you said, as far as the timeline goes, that's going to be a huge effort, so.
Okay.
I guess I would entertain the motion that we allow Lynn to go ahead and make the decision on the product she wants as long as it's within, yes, sir?
Sorry, if you're going to approve today, and that's fine, because there will need to be a contract drafted. It'll be exactly like one you've seen for another department. I do think it's important to go ahead and authorize her to accept a quote from Flooring America, which is where the mid-range product with the 20-year warranty was coming from. And to either choose that mid-range product, which is approximately $3,000 if I remember correctly, for tear out and installation, or to substitute that product with another product to her liking of approximately the same cost.
And.
I'll make that motion.
And to designate where the money's coming from.
Yes, and that money will be coming from Kim Cap.
That's how I thought, just wanted to make sure.
So I have a motion. I'll second that motion. All in favor?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. And just bear with us on your restroom repair.
That's, yeah, that's kind of, that needs to be sooner than later.
Yes, we've got that. It is on our radar. We just need to clarify a few things. Next, the Green County Clerk. Pitney Bowes Agreement. Good morning, Madam Clerk.
Good morning. I am just asking for approval and a signature for a renewal contract with Pitney Bowes for our postage machine. It's a 60-month contract, and with this, we get a new machine with all the bells and whistles.
I know we have approved this contract in the past. It's budgeted to your department, so your office, I would entertain a motion to approve the Pitney Bowes contract.
You have.
Second. All in favor? Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
The jail elevator shaft sump pump agreement. This is an issue that's arisen at the jail that basically nobody was aware of, that there was no sump pump facility in the elevator shaft. We do have an estimate for that improvement, and with the recent rains that we've been having, I'd like to get that done as soon as possible. So I would entertain a motion to approve the agreement for the.
Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay.
Just, again, for clarity and transparency, there were two quotes. The maintenance was the lower of the two quotes, was lower by about $2,500, local, local business. Just wanted to make sure that the motion was to accept the J&amp;P point and to enter into an agreement.
I'll make that motion. We do accept the J&amp;P. I remembered that, too.
I will second the motion. All in favor? And that will come from the Community Corrections, or the Corrections Facility Fund. Next, we have the Green County Auditor with the Lau Associates Software Agreement.
I am here requesting approval for the Lau Service Agreement for our financials. I have already taken it to the council just by the way things fell. They did approve to advertise for the money, so we're waiting on the final approval. I know that we got the agreement last Wednesday, and Marvin's been working with them to get some language changed. I think that's done now.
Lau was very cooperative and very easy to work with and accepted the additional provisions I requested.
Any questions, comments?
This would be interesting to me and the Treasurer's Office. She is completely on board with this as well. She would be here, but she's at conference.
You guys are always going to conference for some reason. I don't, I don't understand that. I entertain a motion to approve the Lau Software Agreement.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Next, we have Concrete Repair, the Annex, and the Public Defender. This is something that I would also like to table just due to the fact that we have got another estimate. And Tim has requested that we table this until we have a chance to go over you. He wants to be in the conversation about these two, and I tend to agree with him that we need to, we need a little more time to look these over to make sure we've got apples and oranges and we're not trying to make bananas.
I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second. All in favor? Next, we have the Wafer Signage Contract. This is something that we've talked about. The council did approve the advertisement of the funds. So this is, we kind of talked about this before. Marvin, have you got anything you want to say about the, I don't think that contract's been signed yet. We're waiting on.
Actually, it has now. It was signed after the appropriations were approved for advertising, and so this would be a ratification of that signature.
So with that being said, I would entertain a motion to ratify the signature for the Wafer Signage.
I'll make the motion to ratify.
Second. All in favor? Next, we've got the EMS Director hire. This is something that the, we, the EMS Director at the current time, Deb Hall, he has said he is going to resign. He's got his own excavating business on the side that he does, and he just, it's kind of exploded, so he doesn't have time to do both. I think he's trying to cultivate that business for his son, so he's decided to leave us. The EMS Board put together a committee to go through the applications and present two of those applications to the commissioners. I want to thank them.
Yep.
If their job is as tough, was as tough as what ours was with the two interviews, they had a tough job getting it down to two. We had, the commissioners did conduct some interviews with the two candidates at our executive session, two extremely strong candidates. I see we've got them both here today. We had, both of them are employees of the EMS Department. It's a very tough decision. They are both extremely qualified for this position.
I'd add to that, too, that there were other, several other applications that were also extremely, we had a lot of good applications, and it was really tough for the committee.
Now, say, if the committee had, if the committee had as many qualified applicants as the two they sent us, they had an extremely tough job to get it down to two. David Simpson was one of the candidates, and Scott Sargent was one of the other candidates. They're both here today. I do appreciate you both being here today. It's a very tough decision.
We kind of had a list of things that we wanted to, keep it all on the edge, aren't we? We kind of had a list of what we expected from a director, and we, as we went through the applications and the resumes, we could compare our list with that. And I think independently, we've come up with the, basically the same answer, so.
Would you like to go ahead and make the announcement? You are the chairman of the EMS Board?
Well, I'd like to make the motion that we hired David Simpson as the director. His qualifications fit everything we were looking for, and not that Scott's didn't, but it was different. The interviews went fine, and I know Scott, I don't know David, but we felt like his interview was, was a really good interview, and he hit all the, all the nails on the head. So I'd like to make that motion.
I'm going to add a little more drama here. I don't want anybody to think that this was an easy decision. It was, it was very, 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 very hard, and I do appreciate the dedication that both of these individuals have shown to this department. It's extremely obvious to anybody that looks, both of these individuals deeply care about this service, and I just, I just can't emphasize that enough, that if everybody, every county employee cared as much as these two individuals, there would be absolutely no problems in Green County because these guys really do care. And I will second the motion to appoint David Simpson as the EMS Director. All in favor? And I truly thank both of you guys for your dedication, and it's extremely, extremely inspiring to anybody that looks. Thank you very much. I don't have any Commissioner Board appointments this morning. Economic Development, bring in.
I was on, I was on vacation last week and playing catch-ups, so I don't have any updates this morning.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
County Attorney. Marvin, do you have anything for us this morning?
I do. There was an item that didn't make it to the agenda, but that you were made aware of during email. The Sheriff's Department wishes to purchase something known as a Life Radar System. This will help monitor wirelessly people that have health conditions that might put them at risk and therefore might put the jail at risk if something happened and those conditions are unmonitored. It should improve our, it probably won't save any insurance money, but it probably improves our liability and risk outlook in doing so. I circulated an agreement to you, pointed out that there were several provisions that we would like to have inserted or changed. Those all have been changed. The company selling the product, Command Sourcing, was very good to work with, and integrity communications solution, the builder of that product was also very good to work with. And so on behalf of the Sheriff's Department, I'd like to ask that you approve the agreement to enter into, or approve entering into the agreement with Command Sourcing and allow the sheriff to purchase these items. He does have, does have the money.
I think anything that helps remove any liability from that jail.
Yep. Helps for us.
Is a very, is a very, very big thing, so I would entertain the emotion to, the motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
That's the only thing I have for you?
Do we have any elected official or department head comments this morning?
Good morning.
Hi, Shirley.
Hi. I just wanted to let you guys know that August is a big month for the Health Department. On August 16th, we're having our health fair, our annual back-to-school health fair. Last year, we had about 500 people come through. We're looking to see the same type of participation. And then August 23rd, we're doing, we're starting Cohort 3 for the Food is Medicine Program. Do you guys have any questions about those activities?
No, I did, did look through your emails that you sent on those, and both of them are very worthwhile programs, I think.
Thank you.
I really do hope you have a very good turnout for your back-to-school.
Thank you.
And I think that your Food is Health, or Food is Medicine Program is going to just keep getting bigger and bigger.
I think so, too. Hopefully, we can convince insurance companies to fund it.
Anybody that hasn't seen that should check into that, anybody watching out there should check into that Food is Medicine. I think that's a good program, and I know there's people that eat because of ease, you know? Don't have to cook anything or anything, but you're actually going to have some cooking lessons, too, to go along with that.
Yes.
It's simple and quick, and it's healthy eating.
Healthy eating, so the first six weeks of the 18-week project, which we do cooking demonstration and nutrition education, everything around diabetes education, high blood pressure, eating healthy, and then shopping healthy, you know, on a budget, you know, because organic foods are more expensive, but we try to educate individuals around that and how to continue to eat wise on a simple budget. So all that's part of the plan. We do the biometrics at the beginning, and then after the 18 weeks, we take the biometrics again so that we can show people how, you know, eating healthy changes their blood pressure and their sugars, so it's really a worthwhile program. And then on top of that, we shop locally, so all the food boxes, ads for the cooking demonstration, we try to buy from vendors that are here in Green County. And if we can't get the vegetables, fruits and vegetables in Green County, then surrounding counties. So we stay as local as possible, and Save-A-Lot has been an excellent partner, and it's great to work with them because it keeps those grocery stores in our area.
Thank you very much, Shirley.
Thank you.
Do we have any other? Do we have any other elected official or department head comments this morning? Do we have any public comment this morning? I don't have a discussion item listed this morning. Commissioner Michael, do you have any announcements this morning?
I don't.
I have one, the 11th, the paving contractors are supposed to be back starting in the county again on the 11th and they'll be here for about two weeks. So they'll be scattered all over the county. So just please give them a little bit of courtesy whenever possible because they're here working for everybody in the county. Our next regular public meeting will be August the 19th at 9:30 a.m. in this room. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Thank you all for coming.